This is November 7th, 2016 at 5:30 PM in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? And we have a special group tonight. The Wee-Balows are here with us tonight. Would you guys come on up here and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Please, and thank you. What's your troop number?
Forty.
I said Core School.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Thanks a lot, troop forty. Thanks, guys. Definitely appreciate ya. Core School representing. I used to go to Core School a long, long, long time ago. All right.
And then they tore the building down.
That's right. That's right. Because it was so... On the... Oh, I'm sorry. Katie, roll call, please.
McCambell.
I'm here.
Scott.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Davidson.
Here.
Fleming.
Here.
All right. Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda having been discussed are considered to be routine by the City Council, will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. On the Consent Agenda tonight, we have the usual. Finances and miscellaneous. Minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes reports and bonds. We have one resolution. Resolution approving final acceptance, final payment, and release of retention monies for the 2015 Maslow Sewer Separation Market Phase 1. We have five public hearings set for November 21st, 2016. The first is consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 157 Electrical Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. The second is consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 158 Public Plumbing Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. The third is consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 170 Zoning Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. The fourth is consideration of a sale of property locally known as 503 Summer Street, City of Burlington, Iowa with conditions. And the fifth is consideration of a sale of property locally known as 227 South 9th Street, City of Burlington, Iowa with conditions. We also have two appointments.
We have two committees with vacancies, the City Plan Commission, and we're appointing Christine Roberts for that, and the Zoning Board of Adjustment, Connor Breakfield. We thank you folks for volunteering and for all who serve on our commissions, and we so appreciate you.
Well done. Well said. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these items from the Consent Agenda removed? I see none. Counsel?
Item 5, please.
And number 4.
Okay. Can we get a motion?
Motion to approve all listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda.
As amended.
Uh, what?
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
McCambell.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Okay. First, we have consideration of a sale of property locally known as 117 South 7th Street, City of Burlington, Iowa with conditions. Mr. Tisland.
This is a vacant lot the city previously acquired and demolished the structure on the lot. We did contact the neighboring property owners and the church located on Division 8th Street had interest in the property. They previously had purchased the property at 131 South 7th from the city. This would be a vacant lot sold to adjacent property owner being St. John Paul's Church of Burlington for $100.
Is there anybody from the audience that has any questions, concerns? I see none. You're a lovely crowd tonight. Counsel?
No.
No.
Okay.
Motion to close.
Second.
Almost had Kathleen. Katie.
McCambell.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 117 South 7th Street, City of Burlington, Iowa with conditions.
Second. Kathleen.
McCambell.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Thank you. Katie? All right. Next, we have consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with Greenway of Burlington, Iowa Associates, with Greenway of Burlington Associates for encroachment into Valley Street right-of-way at 2312 Valley Street, Burlington, Iowa. Mr. Tisland.
This was brought forward by the property owners and property managers as a possible method to improve safety and security on the site at this location. They had proposed to place a gate to close the street on Valley Street, which would limit access into and out of the site from Washington Street off of Shield Street. They felt one access point would better enable them to secure the facility and know who's coming and going at the site. A couple... Some of the concerns raised would be snow removal, emergency access to the site. I have had some ongoing discussions with the applicant, although we wouldn't recommend approval based on what was proposed, just based on a manual gate where people would have to get out and open the gate. We'd have had some discussions on automated gate systems, whether that'd be a possibility, and he is looking into that. So, based on the concerns of snow removal, parking on the site, and manual gate, staff did not recommend approval at this time, but we are continuing to work with the applicant and see if there's other possibilities, and one being an automated gate system that we would bring back as a new encroachment agreement with them if that were able to be worked out with them.
Thank you for doing that, Eric. That's a good idea, I think.
Is there anybody from the audience that has any comments or concerns? I see none. Counsel?
I'm in agreement with Eric. I'm not gonna vote for this. I won't.
All right. Based on the staff recommendation, I'm not gonna vote favorably either.
I mean, it's a great idea. I'd like to get all the bugs worked out first, but I definitely think that they should have some sort of a gate there.
What she said. Mr. Fleming? Okay.
Motion to close.
Second.
Katie.
McCambell.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
I have a resolution authorizing a permanent encroachment agreement with Greenway of Burlington Associates for encroachment into Valley Street right-of-way at 2312 Valley Street, Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Katie, let's vote on it.
McCambell.
No.
Scott.
No.
Wilson.
No.
Davidson.
No.
Fleming.
No.
Your Honor, a motion for final adoption of an ordinance amending Section 150.07, affixing numbers to Chapter 150 Building Numbering of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second. Thank you. Mr. Tisland.
This code section again is related to posting building numbers on homes and businesses and what the requirement is for those numbers. This updates the city code to be in compliance with the fire code standards with a four-inch high number on a building with a minimum stroke width of 0.5 inches, clearly visible and readable from the street and in plain view, and contrast with the background material or color and be of durable material. So, this just makes it so that the fire code and the city code are similar in their requirements, so there's not competing codes, and also to hopefully raise some more awareness on individuals to get their building numbering up, their home address in plain view from the street, so that emergency personnel and delivery vehicles, post office, friends can know where you're located, so.
That's right. We wanna see who you're at. If it's an emergency, we wanna know how to get to ya. That's all it is. We wanna be able to see ya. We wanna see your number so that somebody can get to ya to help you. That's what this is all about. Anybody from the audience has any questions or concerns? Okay. Everybody in the audience does appreciate wanting to be helped. That's what... Okay. Counsel?
I think you said it. I think Mr. Scott's probably gonna talk about it, so.
Oh, sorry. This was important that we went through all three readings so that we had the opportunity to stress the importance of putting your address numbers up. Been driving around the past couple of days, and I'm amazed at the number of commercial establishments, retail establishments that don't have their addresses up.
That's surprising.
Being a businessperson, I think that's one of the most important things you can have, is you can tell somebody how to get there, but if they have your address, they'll know they're there. Let's get the numbers up and make the community safer for yourself and safer for our first responders and easier for those involved in delivery of goods and services to home addresses, home and commercial addresses.
I was just telling Darwin Johnson the other day to put numbers on his house. He wouldn't listen. Let's vote on it.
McCambell.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Well done. Your Honor, a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance creating Chapter 38 Tree Advisory Board of the Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
No changes from the previous reading. Again, this is advisory resource for city officials and staff and the community at large, providing information, education, recommendations, and support to promote practices that lead to healthy urban forests. We've gone through Emerald Ashore. There are other diseases and issues with trees that may come up in the future and wanna have a support system for our limited staff and being able to get out to the public and let them know what the issues are and how to deal with those properly, as well as helping advise staff on whether it's code changes or designation of Tree City USA or other planting and activities, applying for grants when we apply for some of these tree grants of getting support out for planting and ideas of where they should best be located. So, this is just additional support for the city as an advisory role, working with our trees and our streets and our right-of-ways and parks.
Right on. Anybody from the audience have any questions or concerns about the Tree Advisory Board? I see none. Counsel?
The only observation I made, remember, a couple of weeks back was that since they're required to make a report on July 1st, I'd like to see all our committees do the same thing. So, can we...
It would require doing some level of an ordinance change that would modify various code sections, but...
Can we do that, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
No doubt. Well done.
Your Honor, a motion to amend. To amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance creating Chapter 38 Tree Advisory Board of the Burlington Municipal Code to read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration, adoption of the second reading, and for the final adoption of an ordinance creating Chapter 38 Tree Advisory Board of the Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Okay. We will vote first on the amendment, and then we'll vote as amended. Katie?
McCambell.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Okay. As amended.
We have a resolution approving the preliminary plaid of six addition to Stone Gate Crossing subdivision.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Tisland.
This is Stone Gate Crossing subdivision located south of Mason Road, just east of Roosevelt Avenue. There's currently one lot platted within this subdivision, being the Dunn Brothers Coffee there at the corner of Roosevelt and Mason Road. This preliminary plats the remaining lots in development, as well as the street right-of-way for Lawrence Drive. One modification within this, our city code requires a cul-de-sac at the end of the roadway, this being a short stub of Lawrence Drive, as well as being commercial businesses around there, working with the fire department. They'd recommend allowing a hammerhead turnaround design in compliance with the fire code. This subdivision will also meet all our requirements to the D-Walled Plaza PUD that was previously approved. This is adjacent to the airport, and all the height restrictions are stated within that PUD and other restrictions for use, so this would meet all those conditions as well as previously approved. But again, this plats out six additional lots, seven lots in the total area, with Lawrence Drive extending south, and then plans for a possible private road connecting back along Mason Road lining up with Sequoia Drive for access from these lots through the PUD. Individual access onto Mason Road is not allowed, but would allow access onto Mason lining up with Sequoia and then having a private drive connecting back through the subdivision to Lawrence Drive.
Okay. Got it.
Essentially a frontage road for these lots.
Is there anybody from the audience that has any questions or concerns on this development? See none? Counsel?
No, I just wanna say this is... I think this is absolutely incredible that Mike Pearson continues to push forward with his developments and absolutely doing a tremendous job, but for all of this that's taking place in Burlington right now, I'm just almost overwhelmed that there's so much going on.
Yeah, great. You're right.
We were behind the eight ball for quite some time, and I think all the efforts of everybody, and especially our private developers, are starting to show through. I'm just thrilled to see this take place. Thanks, Mike.
That's right, Mike P. Well done. Well done, man. Thanks for doing what you do, my friend. Are we good to go?
And for the vision of your dad, too.
No doubt. Let's vote on it. Katie?
McCambell.
Yes.
Scott.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Your Honor, a resolution approving the preliminary plaid of Arbor View Estates subdivision.
Second.
Mr. Tisland.
This is the preliminary plaid of 23 lots located north of Sunnyside Avenue, just east of Cliff Road. This was previously approved through a PUD, Arbor View Estates PUD, to allow zero lotline development on the south side of the property with duplex condo structures. They're all located on approximately 5,000 to 7,000 square feet lots. Lots to the north of the east-west roadway are located upwards of half-acre lots and would be single-family homes. So, this is showing east-west roadway with a cul-de-sac and a north-south roadway that connects to the property to the north. There's no immediate plans for development of that, but this allows the opportunity for future development and connection of the roadway, so there would not be a dead end within this development. Some possible connections could include a loop back to Cliff Road, which would allow two accesses into this development, which is seen as favorable from emergency access standpoint, utility standpoint as well, and from our zoning code and planning standpoint. As per the previous discussion, one of the concerns was the potential length of time of development of the property to the north and having a dead-end roadway without fire access turnaround, meeting the cul-de-sac standards. That was recommended by the Planning Commission to have a cul-de-sac in this area. Staff recommendation was to allow connection up to the north property line. The fire department did recommend that, having that with the stipulation that lots 16, 17, 18, and 19 be provided with a residential sprinkler system that the developer agreed to at the work session. So, that is in the conditions of approval of their preliminary plaid, is that those lots, provided the street is not connected through, would require those residential sprinklers. If the street connects through and the home isn't built yet, then that requirement would go away because they would have two access points in and out. So, depending on the pace of development, if that occurs to the north, that requirement might not be there for future development, so... Any questions on any of that?
I just wanna be clear. We're not requiring a cul-de-sac on that north-south.
Not requiring a cul-de-sac. There is shown in the preliminary plaid a temporary easement for turnaround in that, and that would be platted with the final plaid based on location of how that's developed. The Planning Commission did recommend approval, but the approval of the council is shown as Exhibit A, which is this exhibit shown here, with the condition that those lots have sprinklers.
Okay. I'm okay with that. Thank you.
Anybody from the audience with any questions or concerns? Okay. I see none. Counsel?
I think it's gonna be a great development.
It's true. As long as they got the sprinklers, I'm good. Another reason to be excited about another housing development coming in. It's very peaceful.
We've really been getting blessed here in Burlington. And Sonic is open. My daughter's really happy about that, whatever that means.
Have you noticed how busy they are?
It's crazy. It's crazy. Man, I'll tell you what. If I knew you could make that kind of money selling hot dogs, let's take it to vote. I'm getting frustrated here.
McCambell.
Yes.
Scott.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
All right.
Your Honor, I move to approve the unified communication systems upgrade with Tri-City Electric Company.
Second.
That's a little slow there, but I got it now.
Got it.
Stephanie?
Just to let you know, if people are watching on the cable channel, they're not able to hear this, so...
I just got a text that...
Yeah. We know we're working on the problem downstairs. It is on Ustream, though, but those people watching can't hear this.
Hold on. Let me get this... They still... Nobody can hear what's being said?
They can on Ustream. If they're watching...
Trust me. I was just gonna say I was good-looking or something.
Katie has it recorded, so... But yeah, unfortunately, if you're watching it on... If they're watching it on MediaCom, they can't hear. They can see you guys, but they can't hear you, so...
Okay.
We're working on it, so...
They can read lips.
Yeah. They could read the minutes next week, right? So, this resolution is for a new telecommunication system citywide. This was in our budget this year for FY '17. It's part of our IT budget. All the bids came in within... They did fall within our budgeted amount that we thought... That we were expecting for equipment and installation. Our current system we're using now is an NEC system, and it's about 10 years old, and the product is at the end of life, so we can't get new phones, and there's no support available, so it's time to get a new one, so... As you can see in the resolution, we did... We went out to bid three times over the last year and a half, and this is the final one. We're satisfied with this bidding process, and the... We had the six bids that were returned, and they were reviewed by our IT Steering Committee, and we've made the recommendation that we go with the low bid, which is the Mitel system for $68,244. Does anyone have any questions?
This affects all departments, right?
Yes. Yeah. And our IT committee is made up of representatives from every department, so...
What's the timeline for this to be done?
Good question. If this... When this is... After this is approved tonight, we'll set up some planning meetings, kinda have some kickoffs. Again, they'll go around every department, make sure all the equipment we're ordering is exactly what we need. So, it's probably a listed two-to-four-month process by the time it's up and running. This conversion, I guess, will be a little bit smoother than our last one, since you're not actually on phone lines anymore. It'll just be over computer lines, so we'll be able to have a... You know, we'll still be able to answer our phone as we're implementing the new system. It won't be a shut-down and turn-back-on.
Yeah.
Which that will make it a little bit smoother for everybody, so...
Okay.
What about services? Tri-City gonna provide service after the sale?
Yeah, we do have a maintenance contract. They're located in Davenport, so they're close. They're not down the street, but yeah, I mean, and a lot of the services, I think, will be us picking up the phone and making a phone call and troubleshooting over the phone, so, since it's computer-based. But yeah, the annual maintenance is included in this first year, the $68,000, and then after that, we have a quote, I think it was a couple thousand dollars, but we're not sure if we need all the services that they're quoting for that maintenance. We wanna see how the first year goes and then decide how much we'll wanna commit to.
Progress.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Okay.
Any comments, concerns from anybody from the audience? Any comments from the Wee-Balows? It's been so quiet tonight. Okay. All right. Counsel? Let's do it.
I...
Looks good.
I'm sorry that our local didn't win the bid, but you gotta do what the low bid is, so...
Let's vote on it. Katie?
McCambell.
Yes.
Scott.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Okay. We're getting new phones.
Your Honor, I move we approve the contract for engineering services for Mount Pleasant Street Bridge.
Second. Mr. McGregor?
Good evening, Counsel.
Good evening.
Before you, is a resolution approving the contract with Stanley Consultants, who was selected through an RFP process. Part of that process was done through Councilmember Davidson and Councilmember Scott, where cost was a factor. At the last meeting, I did talk about aesthetics, but I think at this meeting, I think we need to approve the contract as-is and potentially look at aesthetics as an option in the future. In the contract, you can see that the aesthetic cost is about $18,000 for design work, and it would amount to about 3% of overall cost of the project. As I learned last week, we can approve that at a later date, and so at that point, we probably would be able to understand what that cost is gonna do to the overall cost of the bridge. So, at this point, my recommendation is just to go forward with the contract as-is.
That makes sense.
Otherwise, we can take a look at some aesthetic designs if you'd like to, but...
I don't... I don't wanna confuse the issue right now.
Is there gonna be a desire from the Counsel as time goes on to look at aesthetic issues with this, to at least do that kind of a comparison, or do you feel, based on the location of this bridge, that that's not even something worthwhile considering?
That's the way I feel, looking at the location.
Yeah.
That's my feeling, too, but there's... The public may step forward, and that's... I mean, that's an option, I think.
I'd be willing to look, yeah.
We need to keep open, but I really think for the location of where it's at and being in the midst of other bridges, I think counsel would design this...
So, I think that you're gonna see staff moving forward with the idea that that's probably not gonna be something that we're concerned about as we move through this planning process, but if you have something come up where you wanna bring that back up, you have between now and probably February or March to make a decision about that, to do that.
The good thing about, a lot of the design work on the upfront is gonna be able to check and see where the pillars can be laid, and it's all gonna be pre-cast, so those aesthetic designs are just a stamp on the side of the pre-cast, so it shouldn't affect any of the design work up to that point.
What's the timeline on construction?
We're talking two thousand and eighteen, probably running into fiscal year nineteen by the time it's up and ready to go.
Thank you.
As far as the design goes, is it gonna be compatible with, like, the complete streets? I don't know.
Is, some of the things that they're looking at doing is to have a, a combination bike lane, walking lane, and I think that's only on one side?
Correct. It'll be a wider, trail-sized sidewalk on one side.
So, yeah, the, the elements are contemplated to be abortion of it.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. McGregor. Anybody from the audience? Questions or concerns? None from the wee-below's? Counsel?
We're good.
All right, Katie, let's hold on.
McCampbell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
All right, the ice have it.
Your Honor, I move that we set the date of November twenty-first for consideration of the sale of property locally known as five oh three Summer Street, City Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Second.
Mr. Tisland?
Five oh three Summer did not have.
There's no, no major issues. The concern that had come up, I think that there might be an interest from one of the council members to, to potentially bid on this as this moves through the process. That be accurate?
It's five oh three Summer Street, the one that the regional planning is interested in?
No.
No, that's the two-two-seven South Ninth Street.
Okay.
But just in, in case a council member may have a potential interest in this property, they wanted to make sure that they didn't have any part in the process.
Exactly.
Okay, anything else? Katie?
McCampbell?
Aye.
Scott?
Upstein?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Ice have it?
Your Honor, I move for consideration, we set public hearing date November twenty-first for consideration of the sale of property locally known as two-twenty-seven South Ninth Street, City Burlington, with conditions.
Second.
I move to amend to say the public hearing would be December fifth.
Second.
The main point, we needed some additional time to make sure that everything was actually ready for a public hearing, so we, as the planning department was going through this process, they, they needed to adjust the date that the public hearing was held on.
So we're just taking it back, uh, a meeting, so. Katie, are you ready to vote on the amendment?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
McCampbell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
And as amended.
Thanks for coming down. Thanks for coming down.
McCampbell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
All right. Now, we are to the part where we will entertain comments from the audience. We have such a large group tonight. I'm gonna ask you guys to be very careful. We'll start with the left, and we'll work our way this way. Okay. Yes, sir. Sure. Sure.
My name's Paul Ganakis. The Burlington PD and their undercover cars have been following me for seven months. I have picketed for three months now. Last Friday, the police chief's left his stall, which is a restricted stall, and another utility pulled in there and was watching me, so I waved to them, they backed out, and then they went into the gas station, and I had somebody else hold my thing, and I clicked a picture of the license plate and everything. I got license plates, I got pictures. What they're doing now is, I'm dealing with a new breed. All these old people that I have caught and stuff, there's newer vehicles, different people. It's not the same informants or snatchers or whatever you want to say. I try not to do that. They watch me on my lunch hour, when I go to lunch. When I leave the police station, they watch me. They follow me. Last Friday, I dealt with three utility vehicles, a black one, a white one, and a silver one. I followed the black one, the white one got behind me, and then I seen the gray one off to the side, so I let the black one go and went after the gray one. The white one came down and parked in front of Billups, who was watching me. So I walked with my picket sign, and I put it.
Let me come back over. Well, they can't hear you anyway.
I put it on the white car, and the white car took off. This has to stop. I'm an honorably discharged Vietnam veteran. I don't have drugs on my record or anything. And this been going on for seven months, but like I say, I'm dealing with newer people now. They switched all of them on me. I want it to stop. This is not helping my PTSD. And I talk to a lot of businessmen and a few judges when I'm down there, and they cannot believe what's going on. And they cannot believe me been out there for three months straight and saying, you shouldn't have to go through this, Mr. Ganakis, but you've got a lot of stamina.
You got a lot of stamina, that's for sure. Mr. Ganakis, I've already talked to you about this. You know how I feel.
Yes.
And, you know, I, I really wanted you to, to quit picketing, but I respect what you're doing, and, you know, that, that's your right. I, I'd much rather you just be at home, relax in your recliner, you know, and, and not down at the police department picketing. I, I can't, we can't, we can't get into it, we can't get into a back and forth from here. We can't. All we can do is allow you to come down and make your statements, and I can extend you the same courtesy that I did last time, that you can, that you can reach out to each and every one of us individually, and I, I, I don't know what else to tell you outside.
It needs to stop.
Again, I, unless, does anybody have anything else they want to add, or before I?
Can't, we can't stop what's not happening, Paul.
Do what?
We can't stop what's not happening.
You're saying it's not happening?
It's not happening.
What's not happening?
Have you visited the VA lately?
Wait a minute, what is not happening?
You're not being followed.
Yes, I am. Yes, I am.
You're not. We don't, we don't have the manpower. They don't have the manpower.
They got somebody else doing it now.
No.
Yes, they do.
They, they don't have the ma, if they could get manpower like that.
Well, here, I'll, I'll help you.
Okay, okay, hold on, Paul, hold on. Okay.
I'll tell you who it is, if you want to know.
Well, hold on, hold on, Paul, hold on.
Okay.
If you give me time, well, I'll, I'll talk to you. We can't, we can't do this here. We can't do this here.
Let me say this. They got Lee County Task Force following me now. They're all Lee County plates. Does that help you?
But, but that's not, but that's not Burlington.
What's that?
But that's not Burlington.
Well, I'm saying, whatever it is, it's costing money, costing you guys money, and I'm, I'm not seeing things. I'll tell you why. And Tim, you said I need to go to the VA? I go to the VA all the time. I'm tired of it. It's not helping my PTSD by them doing it. Okay, this, I want to go back to Vietnam. So you're saying I don't see the Vietcong?
Paul, hang on, Paul, hang on, Paul. Paul, hang on, hang on.
I'm tired of it.
I, I know, I know, but let, but hold on, hold on. I don't, we don't want you to go back to Vietnam. We're in Burlington, okay? We want you to stay right here in Burlington. That's what, that's what we're gonna do. That's what we're gonna do. We can't do this here. We can't do this here. You know what I'm saying? I mean, it can't, we can't take it any further than this. Paul, you reach out to me tomorrow. I promise you, I'll make time for you, and, and we'll talk about it. We'll talk about it, and then, and then we'll see where we can go.
We talked about nothing's been done.
Well, I understand that, but I'm saying we can't do anything here. That's what I'm saying. We, I can't.
I'm not seeing things.
I'm not saying that you are. I'm saying we, we can't do, we can't do anything about it here.
My MOS was eleven-delled can, recon specialist. You know what a recon specialist is? Okay. I'm good at my job. Otherwise, I wouldn't be here talking to you.
I understand. I understand.
The bottom line is this. We're sitting here telling you, just listen to me. We're sitting here telling you, we do not have in our budget funds for people to follow you around all day.
Okay.
Period.
That's why I'm saying they involve the Lee County in on it. All these cars got Lee County plates. That's too many Lee County plates.
Okay.
And when I, when I'm at home and I don't come out, they come up my neighborhood, back and forth, back and forth.
I've got, I've, I've got some, some information I'd like to give you, or some direction to, to give you to go, but I, I don't want to get into that back and forth here, so we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to shut her down for here, and again, I'm sorry that you came down here. We got, you, you got nothing more than you got the last time, but I've got a.
Yes, I do. It's a new breed of people.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not saying that. I'm saying we, you didn't get any.
And I'm not, I'm not seeing things.
I appreciate you coming down, man, and you definitely, you've got my, you've got my number, you've got my number. Get ahold of me tomorrow. And I, I'll definitely talk to you tomorrow. I'll make time for you, my friend. I'll make time for you.
Well, is anything gonna get done with it, or are we talking?
I don't know. I don't know. Call me tomorrow. Call me tomorrow. Is there anybody else from the audience? Oh, yes, yes, there is. We've got, we've got the group. Was there anybody else on this side? Mike Peace, good. Okay. We've got this group over here. Yes, sir. If you wait till, if you wait till afterwards, I'll talk to you after the meeting. You only gotta wait till tomorrow.
My name's Terry Barngrover, and the rest of my group didn't make it, but we've got a problem in our neighborhood, and it's.
What's the, what's the?
Seventeen twelve agency. Don't ask me who lives there, because it changes every day. And.
Seventeen twelve agency is not your address?
No, I live at five sixteen North Plain. I'm.
Okay.
They're on my alley. We all live off of the alley, all of our garages, and that's our way in and out, the whole bit.
Okay, sure.
And this all starts back in two thousand and eleven was our first issue, and by issue, I mean they're blocking the alley. They're right on the corner of Agency and our alley, and I have some pictures here, so you can see their yard, and they have nowhere to park, so they just stop and park in the alley, which is our way out. And you can bash it down, whatever with them. And they don't take care of any, they don't take care of anything, as you can see, and it's just gotten worse.
So you're telling, you're saying that the people that live there don't own the house?
No, they're renting.
Okay.
Okay, and, okay, as far as the lawn goes, we're, we're beyond that. We're to the point where we don't care what the yard looks like, because they're ruining the whole neighborhood. And like I say, we have actually, here lately, it's gotten to the point now where they're, they're literally swapping license plates on cars, because we've seen them with the stack out there changing them on it. We've had the police there quite a few times, looking at them, when they can make it, stuff like this. We've had fights, six to eight of them, they're fighting. We call the police, and most of the time, they can make it, but by the time they do, everything pretty well subsided and stuff like this. And I know they're short-handed, and I know with everything else that's going on in the city. We actually feel guilty for calling, but we don't know what else to do. And it's gotten to the point now where it's, there was a camper that lived there for about three months, and I don't know with the, how they got it, but the first of the month, when the, the season thing changed, everybody's got to get their stuff off of public property, this, that, and the other, as far as boat trailers, this, that, and the other. Well, the next day, it was gone. So I don't know what they did, but it's gone, so that's great there. But like I said, they had people come in, three or four guys living in this little mobile home in their backyard. And like I say, the biggest issue is with their so-called friends that come in. And now the, the man of the house, I don't, I don't, I've heard his name, but I can't think of it now. Anyway, he just got out of prison about four or five years ago. And what our speculating, speculating is the idea, because some of these places that come in, they're from Arizona, you, they might be just ex-convicts that he made friends with while he was in prison, we don't know, because they'd come live with him for two or three weeks, they'd move on. A new group would come in. They're there for a few weeks, they move on, a new group comes in, and it's been ongoing and ongoing. And, well, I've got a copy of it, but you guys have, there's the police report that we've called down there numerous times. Right now, we're working with Darren Grimshaw, and I don't know, I'm gonna say task force, because I don't remember what he actually said, but they've got two police officers on this, and what it actually, I guess, was designed for was, like, say if you've got issues at a school, some strange car that, you know, they're parking, well, they'll send somebody there to keep an eye on this. Well, they're kind of spreading that over, kind of keeping an eye on this place. Now, what they've observed, I have no idea. But it's gotten to the point that I myself have spent almost sixteen hundred dollars on a security system. We've actually caught one of these clowns siphoning gas out of the neighbor's car. I mean, he left the stuff, took off running with it, and by the time the police there, you know, they're gone. And what do you do, you know? There again, we did find the car, because I seen it in the street, we wrote down the license plate, it come back, that it belonged on some Ford Explorer, and this is some little bitty red sedan, you know, which is just more justification to prove this license plate, and we have seen them with stacks of license plates, you know, and I don't know really how they're even managed to live there, because I've actually witnessed the city on the trash pickup. They do not pick up the trash there any longer, so they're off, they don't pay the bill, whatever's going on there. So I guess my next question is, is the electric and the gas going off later to get them out of there? We're hoping. I got some notes here, but it, it's just, I, I don't know what to do, and, you know, I'm not gonna say we're gonna take matters into our own hands, because I'm not gonna go there, but it's to the point where we feel that way. I mean, this one neighbor had a little trailer sitting there, and these clowns get all, I use the word drugged up or whatever the hell they're doing, but sped by and just wiped out his trailer, puts it, luckily, I was in my driveway, and it puts it in reverse. He was gonna leave. Wife walked in, opened the door, and we stopped this guy. I don't know what. He might have been twenty-one, twenty years old. He couldn't even stand up, you know? Well, they're getting wiped out the trailer. Well, then the next thing you know, the, the gas cans off of our drills, or our, off of our grills are missing. You know, it's just nonstop. The wife and I are out, we're landscaping our yard, and we've got a pallet that we just bought of the, the wood mulch up there. Next day, we go by, they got six or eight bags of the same stuff sitting in their yard. Now, I couldn't prove it was mine, but they don't do nothing in their yard. And like I say, it's been repeated, and like I say, Darren Grimshaw, he's told us, the slightest, he, we, you know, we just call. I mean, that's what we're here for. And like I say, we feel guilty because of all, you know, the shootings and everything going on, the police, and they are short-handed because of cutbacks in the wrong places and all this kind of stuff, but there again, like I said, we don't know what the heck we can do. We want them out of there, and other than, well, I don't, you know, we, I don't know what to do.
I just want to say this, I, because I, every, every once in a while, you get this, and it's, uh, when, first off, I want to say I'm sorry about your problems. You know, that's, there's nothing worse than having a bad neighbor, you know?
Oh, there's fights. There were six or eight of them, thumping each other in the driveway.
Man, I'll tell you, you're preaching to the choir. Been there, done that.
You know?
There, there's no real easy solution to that, because again, just like you said, you talked to Grimshaw, and he says, well, call, that's what our job is. You call a lot, and then by the time they get there, the people are gone. He said, well, we, somebody brought up, well, maybe we need more police, and if we had more police, we get the problem solved. You guys aren't spending enough money in other places. Well, we could put police on every corner, and there's, people are gonna do what they're gonna do. I'm not, I'm not saying that there's no need for police, but I'm just saying, even if, if we had double the police department, there still has to be a way to.
You can't be everywhere.
Well, they just, they just can't. It's impossible to, to do that. The city's too big. We're with the, with the crew that we have right now. We're, we're seventy percent deep into our amount. Now, that's not the, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm, what I'm trying to say is, it's gonna take a concerted effort, I think. This is just me speaking, but it's gonna take a concerted effort, I think, from the, from the neighborhood, and there's gonna have to be proof of something, because just somebody saying, hey, our neighbors are jerks, they're doing this, and they, I believe it. You know, I, I believe what you're saying.
We've had the police there with the proof.
I'm sure, I know the police has been there. All I'm saying is.
And they've witnessed this stuff. Like I say, there'll be nine cars there.
And they can't, and we can't get out of the alley. It's a dead end.
I need you to have you come up here, honey, if you're gonna talk.
Well, another thing I, is a, I guess it would be as a favor. Now, Agency, there's always a police setting somewhere for speeding. Can we ask him to park down here to catch the speeders? I mean, why's it gotta be four blocks up the street?
See that guy sitting right behind you?
Can you do that?
We call him the chief. Talk to him after the meeting. We call him.
Have him park down our side and catch the speeders, just to have a pop in the.
You need, wait, can I have you, uh?
I'm Roberta Barber. I mean, it's a dead end, and we have to honk forever, and everybody in the neighborhood does, and they're go, I'm moving, I'm moving. We can't get out.
Can we get wife's name, please?
Roberta.
Roberta.
Okay, okay.
We can't get out. What if there's an emergency? What if we had an ambulance, that we're a fire? That's our driveway. It's our driveway.
Can, Eric, could you have any comments about this property, or what our new system department's doing?
We emailed you all back in twenty-eleven.
We, we'd sent a certified letter to the owner. It came back unreturned, but our next process was municipal infraction. The letter was on the parking, on the grass and other non-paved surfaces, so Charlie was working with our attorney on moving that forward through that process. But that was sent at the beginning of October, and we just got it back, I think, last week of unsigned for.
Undeliverable.
Yeah.
Have you dealt with several nuisances there this year?
Yeah, we've had, I think, five nuisance, four or five nuisances have come through council as abatements on trash and.
So where does the property owner live?
They live in Washington State somewhere, the property owner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pardon? Yeah, he, she's got the address.
So.
And we're thinking it's their children or somebody that actually, I'll say, is running the house, but I, we don't know who they have. Now, I have to give them credit. The one woman had a couple of kids, and I think she's gotten the kids out. They live two blocks over, so they're always cutting through here to get out of the environment, so at least there is somebody with a little bit of. Can I give, give this in? The people that actually own the place.
Well, we're, we're not gonna be able to fix your problem from here either. But.
Bringing it to light, so.
Yeah, well, we appreciate that. I'm glad you do.
Well, they say the term, you know, there's one in every neighborhood, but we're, we're beyond that, you know?
Yeah, but, and I'm sure the chief will agree.
Yeah.
You just gotta keep calling, you gotta keep calling.
Well, as if.
I know it's frustrating.
About three, four months ago, I don't know the exact year, but I'll take a guess, at least it was between a two thousand and four and a two thousand and ten, Chrysler three hundred M, I mean, a nice one, pulled in and parked there, no plates, no registration or nothing. It moved in the garage. That car never come out, except to be in pieces on a trailer. They were out there all night long for two weeks, cutting this sucker up into pieces. Hauled it out on a trailer. They did sell the wheels, they had them in the front yard, and then somebody can buy, bought, they had the motor sitting on a trailer. You know, they just parted this thing out, and it, I don't know what they're cutting up right now, but it's, it's a, all, a going on all the time in their garage. I work in my garage tinkering around in the summer, and when it's hot, I got my doors open, fans going. That door is clut, shut, locked the whole bit, the whole time, and you can hear them in there. Air saws going and buzzing and cutting stuff up and grinders and whatnot, cutting up vehicles. I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, might be.
Make sure you visit, make sure you visit the big fellow back there before you leave.
Yeah.
Quick comments to kind of get you up to speed on what we're doing. We've been in contact with the Barngrowers, and they have a very legitimate complaint, and they're really super cooperative people, and they're doing everything they can to work with us, so we've assigned the POP unit to be up there as much as they possibly can. Granted, with what's going on, that unit was designed to reduce gun violence, but with that said, they have a problem, and their neighbors are entirely uncooperative. The day they had the fight up there with six or eight people, we went up there, the major went up there, knowing that this was a real issue, tried to address it with the homeowners. You're not a good neighbor. Didn't matter. They don't. They don't care that they're not a good neighbor, and so that just needs to be made clear, and one thing I'll make clear, call. They're blocking your alley, you call us, and we'll do everything in our power to help solve their problem, because they have a legitimate problem, and they're getting zero help from the people that live in that house, and we'll do what we can to get ahold of. I think we've already made some contact with the owner of the property, and it is a family situation, so there might be some resolve coming with that. Can't make any promises, but we're well aware of it, and it is a legitimate complaint. but we're well aware of it, and it is a legitimate complaint.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry you guys had to come down, but thanks for coming down, and, uh, sorry you guys are going through this, but, uh, hopefully, uh, some changes can, you guys can start seeing some type of change, goodness gracious.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
Thanks for coming down.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, no doubt about that, no doubt about that. Mr. Teslin, do you have anything? Katie Music?
McCambell?
All right. That was good. I'll tell you what, that fragged a chick cracks me up. They can't hear what I'm saying. Okay, go ahead. Counsel lady?
It was brought to my attention that there's been some issues at the senior center with parking on Juggler's side. I don't know, I, I mean, you know, it's wonderful, we have this great new restaurant, but it seems that there are some parking issues for the seniors who are trying to get into the senior center, as of, from what I'm being told. I know there's a lot close, but it's a pay-to-park, and I don't know. They were just voicing their concerns with me.
That's an ongoing issue with the senior center, because they used to park in that lot back there, and there were some designated spots for them, but they didn't like that, because it's too far to walk, so now it became a problem, now it's another problem, so...
Is, are there still spots there that are designated?
No, no, there ain't anymore. When you get older, you need a few spots, man, you know? We've gotta protect the spots for our gay and older people. Jim, just because you can still golf, everybody can't.
Don't point your fingers.
Everybody's not a, everybody's not able.
Don't point your fingers this way, bud. Anyway, yeah, it's, it is an issue.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know what, what we can do. I've also got, um, a group who has, uh, expressed interest in, you know, figuring out ordinances and things like that. Uh, it's called A Street Cat With No Desire, so it's all about trap, neuter, and release, 'cause there is a lot of cats, and it just gets worse if they're not fixed, kind of thing. So I don't know, but I noticed in our ordinance, uh, for any trapping, even on private property, you need written permission from law enforcement. Um, so, um, just something to bring to light. And that's all I have.
Well, that was very enlightening, thank you very much, counsel lady, appreciate it. Mr. Scott?
I had a email from a citizen in reference to the White Horse Saloon. Uh, the, uh, I guess the shooting that took place there this weekend was the straw that broke the camel's back for them. He said that they, uh, are constantly having to clean up their yard and, and clean up after the folks that, uh, uh, go to that, um, that neighborhood establishment. He said it's night after night after night, he said, there's all kinds of racket going on there. He said that, uh, the smokers have to go outside to smoke, and, and, uh, they get pretty rowdy. He said, um, they're just, uh, fed up with it, and, and now they have to, uh, duck when they go outside for fear of, uh, shots being fired at them. I, I think that's one place that we might have to look at real hard, uh, next time, before we approve their liquor license.
That's the time to do it, yeah.
The, uh, chief must have something to comment on.
Yeah, in fact, I do, I put together a lot of information I could bring together to upcoming work session, however you want me to present that, but just all the calls for service we've had there, and everything we've done to work with that establishment, and pretty much got nothing in return, so, I mean, I would be in favor of moving forward with a revocation, not waiting to renew, but a revocation.
Can we get that next work session?
I'll, I'll bring that forward, and that'll be a council decision.
Good.
Thank you.
The only, the only way we're gonna get any done, is anything done, is by kicking these people where the, where it's gonna hurt them the most, and I, I'm... These poor folks has gotta come to us, and, and the emails that we get from, from people that are fed up with neighbors that have absolutely no respect, they don't respect themselves, so they certainly don't respect their neighbors. Um, it, it's, it, it's getting worse and worse and worse every day, and I'm, I'm at wits' end on, on what to do, and the, and I know our staff is working their butts off trying to follow the process to, uh, to, to get these people to, uh, to shape up or ship out, and it's, it's nearly impossible. I mean, the latest example is the gentleman that owned property at, at Eighth and Washington, and, and pitched a tent there for, for six months, and it took six months to get him out of there, and then, and then they, he come right back, and it took another six months to get him out a, a second time. I think they, I think we finally have that one resolved, uh, we can take action now, uh, on, on that property without further, without further legal action, but, but, um, with what you folks are experiencing, just two blocks, two and a half blocks away from you, I, there's a, there's another home that the, the same kinda thing goes on day in and day out, and, and neighbors constantly complain, and we have staff up there constantly trying to take care of them, and it's, it's like that in many, many places all over town. We've got to, we've gotta find a way to, uh, to be, uh, more proactive in getting these things handled, so you folks don't have to put up with that kind of... We're with you, I am.
Well said.
Excuse me.
Um, just wanna, I, I just wanna say, every, I, uh, what Tim said about White Horse, uh, and that's not anything against that place, but, um, any place that we have an issue with in Burlington that's doing more harm than good, uh, or at least appears that way, I think we need to reevaluate, so, uh, um, we, we need to try to help make a better Burlington. I, I wanna thank, uh, sometimes it's tough being the mayor, um, uh, sometimes I, you know, you can create that yourself, but anyways, every once in a while, you get a really good day where you get to do something really fun, and you think, man, it's really great to be mayor. I had that day today.
Was that because you were with me?
I'm not talking to you right now, but I, I had that morning today, uh, it wasn't because I was with Jim, but it was because I gotta go read at Apple Blossom, uh, preschool daycare this morning, and there were, uh, eight little kids there that were fantastic, I had a reading about, uh, Clifford, the big red dog, election, Clifford. And it was fantastic, so I just wanna say to the little kids that, uh, one little guy can't even think of his name now, but he said, I said, make sure you tell your dad to watch tonight, but anyways, I'm waving to ya, he was the guy sitting on the end. Uh, but it was, it was fantastic, I got a chance to do that today, so I just wanna say thanks for the kids there. Also, a lot of things going on in Burlington, uh, we had, uh, a visit from Last Minute's, uh, election, when, uh, when the races are close, where do people come? But to beautiful Burlington, and Donald Junior was here, trying to get some Last Minute elections and whatnot, uh, and this nice crowd down in, uh, uh, at Burlington, and at, at the Majestic today, uh, nice crowd, a lot, a lot of different faces that I saw today. Also, we had, uh, we turned dirt, uh, at the US Bank Building, it was a double happy, because as they're turning dirt, preparing to, uh, to put their new location there, we'll be moving into the old location, so it was a, was a double win, a fantastic deal there. Also, I was running late for it, but I did actually see the ribbon get cut, and the plane take off, we, uh, opening up the new, uh, flight to Minnesota. So if you wanna fly to Minnesota from Burlington, you can do that now, um, you know, we're having it right here in Burlington, we're doing it. So, uh, that, that was exciting as well, but a fantastic day today, but, uh, most importantly, of all the things that happened today, the little kid, man, I can't think of that little guy's name, I wrote it down on a piece of paper, and I lost a piece of paper. But whatever that little kid's name was, I'm gonna remember your name, but little kid, you're pretty cool, and, uh, uh, I'm waving to you again. He says, I don't think my dad likes you, that's, actually, I really like that little kid. Little kids are telling the truth, my friend, I said, what's your dad's name? Anyways, that's all I've got, uh, Mayor Pro Tim?
Uh, just to piggyback on that, tomorrow, you, everybody surely knows by now that there's an election. And if you haven't voted yet, I trust that you will go to the booth after you've prayed and figured out who should be voted for, and that you will do so accordingly. I, I'd surely like to give a long lecture about not voting straight party, but I can't do that, so I just say, pray and vote for who you should vote for. And it really saddens me, Chief, to see that our police officers have to have a black band across their badge, and, uh, that whole thing, something really needs to be done, and I have something I'd like to advocate, but I don't think I was ready for it yet, so, um, I'll just hold that in abeyance. At six thirty, you had something going, didn't you, Chief?
Yeah.
We're missing it, aren't we?
I'll be there.
Okay, all right. You have my, my su, support, you guys, you know that, right?
Yes.
Counting for me?
I'm going down at six thirty-two, I'll be late. I have nothing for you.
You deserve a right.
City manager.
Which means he's trying to tell me not to talk very long.
That's correct.
Boy, you figured that out.
Yeah, sure.
I've been told that a few times, and I've kind of almost mishearing it. I mean, there've been concerns been raised by different people within the community and outside of the community over issues on both a local level and a national level. Um, we had somebody advocate that we should have two officers in every vehicle, so that you can, uh, potentially avoid, uh, some of the incidents that have happened, and there's some things you just can't quite come up with a way to fund. I mean, that's an extra, I mean, if, even if you did that just on the night shift, you're talking about an additional twelve people at an eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar cost, and there's just things, annual operating, and it would be valuable, but there's, everything has to be kept in perspective to some extent. Um, as we deal with incidents around the community, you've mentioned, there's a lot of them. The neighborhood that's, was up speaking tonight isn't the only one who's dealt with multiple issues over time, and our PD puts an awful lot of time into each, each one of them. I, you know, we had an issue up in our area for several years, uh, the department worked on, and you, we, I know we had officers who spent multiple nights, uh, when they had time, they'd go into the community, walking through the neighborhoods, trying to catch something happening, and eventually they did. But it took months and years to get, get stuff, get things taken care of, and, and it gets especially difficult when you're dealing with these things, as Councilmember Scott was mentioning, it, it's not just one neighborhood, this is multiple places around the community, and we're not isolated in that as, with our community. That's something that occurs other places as well. We try to do the best job we can, and we also have to recognize that there's only so much that you can accomplish. Uh, as, as you try to push towards one thing, something else gives way on the other side. But just keep everything in perspective, and try to do the best you can with, with the resources that are available. November eleventh, this Friday, we're closed, Veterans Day. For those with garbage pickup, such as I, uh, have on, on Friday, that will occur on Thursday. And sometimes we'll get adjusted throughout the week, I think there'll be a press release that goes out, uh, if it hasn't gone out yet. We have been, if, if you've noticed, Dresser Rand site cleanup has progressed pretty well. We've had one change order that's come in, um, as they found a couple of caverns that, uh, weren't anticipated, and found some sledge that they weren't expecting. I think the chain is, that's about a five-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-dollar project, there was a change order for, I think it was eighteen thousand. They ended up having to do some additional, um, removal of soil in some locations, just based on the level of lead content that they found. Uh, I think that what I saw for quantity adjustment, they were looking in the twelve-to-fifteen-thousand-dollar range on that, so that five-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-dollar project's looking to probably be in the six, six-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar range when, when all is said and done. It's expensive to do cleanup. That's not the only cleanup that we're involved with, or will be involved with over time. Um, we're in the process of, with our assessments, uh, that, uh, we were awarded two separate grants, two hundred thousand dollars each. We went through an RFQ process, we'll be bringing back, uh, a recommendation on, uh, what firm to work with as we move forward on those assessments, and part of our goal with that is to go after additional cleanup funds, for any sites that we assess where there isn't, where there's actually found that there's a cleanup that needs to be done, see if we can't try to get some funding on the back end, too. Uh, places where this has occurred in the past, where, once you've had that assessment, um, done, they look at a, a decade process, where you just sort of try to work through, um, projects. And it's, it's not an, a short-term thing, that's a long-term issue that we try to work, work and deal with. And that's, I think, part of what you have to recognize when we're working with government, it's almost all is a long-term, slow process. And I'll let you go, so you can get down to your vigil.
All right, well, then, there's nothing else, I know what you came down for, you missed it, honey, they were doing it, they were talking. All right, there's nothing else, Tom. That's, thank you, uh, anybody can make the, the, uh, radio show?
I can't, not Wednesday.
Don't make me go alone, guys, I'll do it, but it'll be ugly. Hmm, you in?
Sure.
All right, meet me there.
I can start again in November, December, December, I can start.
He's gotta keep adjusting that as the weather stays good, you know? All right, somebody?
I move that we adjourn at this time.
Second.
Katie Bug?
McCambell.
Yes.
Scott?
Hi.
Wilson?
Hi.
Davidson?
Hi.
Fleming?
Hi.
Just means adjourned, thank you. How you doing, Katie? Are you hanging out?